To the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody is here, but we'll have some. And I'm gonna reopen the public meeting that we temporarily closed on the last session that we had, and it has to do with ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five, which establishes the rates for the water. And the meeting is now open, and we have anybody that has comments on the water situation that we're facing? If you don't have any comments, I'll close the meeting at this time, and it's seven oh one. And I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five, and it states that an ordinance establishing rates and charges will be collected by the town of Thorn Town, Indiana, from the customers served by the Water Works Utility in said town. You there, second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes.
Here is the receipt for everyone's time.
Okay, we got presentations from the public. You got a variance request?
Yeah, I'm John Cornwell, I live on three fifty-six North Grove Streets, been in town for about thirty years, but when I just to give you a little background and kind of explain what I'm looking at here, when I first took my place in this modular home, I couldn't meet the offset variance on both sides of me and put my house to correct direction, so I originally submitted my plan to the town board to put a long ways in my lot. Well, they said that, you know, and I knew, it wasn't a good deal, right? They called me up and they said, we don't really, you know, we'd rather you put this one, I said, I know, but I can't meet your offset.
Right.
And the scoop is, I have a neighbor, I'm laid out lot lot, there's a small alley beside me, I think it's eleven foot or twelve foot, and then Carl Bobard's house used to be Moline's house on the other side of it, that alley doesn't have anything down it. As far as I know, the town board gave me a variance on my house, okay, to put it in there, so, well, now, I'm trying to improve things, get some crap under yard, mini barns, whatever I can do. I want to add ten foot, except my garage, ten foot. Now, that will put me even with my house, okay, so if you're looking at it from the road, I'm trying to aesthetically be correct, but I'll need a variance, I'm only gonna be like two and a half foot up the alley, but it's the same as my house. There's no sewer lines or anything around down that, as far as I know, there never have been. And it's the chicken or the egg thing, guys, I don't know what to do on this, because, you know, without the variance, I mean, I've submitted, between myself and contractors, submitted for a permit, but, you know, if I can't get a variance, I can't, why would you go through all the rest of it? Because I could change everything, you know, but I am prepared to go forward if I can get the variance. So, basically, I need to crowd the alley, not my other neighbor, the exact same as I did on my house.
So you're what, you're gonna come to the south off your garage?
Yeah, yeah, and that's the best way to do it, because then I don't have to angle and do, you know, change my roof line, all that stuff, so. Oh, yes, oh, by the way, according to you guys' rules, which is kind of hard to hand by, you know, because things have changed, I have went around and gotten signatures from all the property owners within like two houses of every direction of me, so that has been satisfied, we did her copy of it, I think, and so everybody around me owns the actual property, not the renters, but the owners, have signed off okay on it. So I'm requesting that I can get a variance approved, and then I can move forward with, you know, working on getting the building permit, you know, move through.
That's where we got the neighbors to sign.
Yeah, there should be a, you guys have this drawing, right? It shows that, and by the way, I'm like, at least when I got this from Anderson Associates, I was the only guy on that whole half of town, maybe the whole town, that actually had a survey, I had to pay like four times the price, had to start out the field, so, you know, you'll even notice my neighbor's barn and stuff's in the alley, on the, you know, across the alley side, but I don't care, I'm just mentioning that because I tried to do the right thing to begin with, I actually got a survey and everything, made some good neighbors, do the right thing, so that's what I got, fellas. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, you're saying that that's ten feet? That's what you're gonna add on to your garage, it's ten feet?
Ten feet with no, it's not gonna have a, I'm sorry, I'm tired, it's not gonna go over, hang on a minute, let it just be straight, just like it is, it's gonna look identical what it is now, I'm gonna, you know, site it and everything, same as it is, it's gonna have one door, just like a like pull mower, get junk out of my everywhere, you know, and that's the goal, anyway.
Okay, well, that ten feet doesn't put you in the alley?
I'm not, no, and what it does is I have to, I think it crowds the alley, I'm two and a half foot, I'm on my property, but I can't meet the offset on my property, yeah, I'm not in the alley at all, I'm not asking to close it, none of that. Yeah.
You want to make a motion to approve it?
So, there's a couple things you probably ought to do when you're doing this, so you're gonna have, because you don't have a VZA set up yet, you would want to probably make a motion that includes changing, well, suspending, going to the VZA first, and letting council decide, and then also, you would want to make sure that you're suspending the rule of, because I think the ordinance says it's supposed, he's supposed to have receipts from sending my certified manual to the neighbors.
We already got a signature.
Yeah, we were told that.
But since he went, yeah, so since he, I would say you need to probably mention that in your motion as well, that the signatures were obtained instead of.
And we have received, we did send them all, but we were able to, we were able to get signatures.
Yeah, we did, we didn't do the paper thing, because we found out that we got two neighbors in every direction, you know, everybody around us, basically, by a couple houses, and we didn't have to do that by your guys' rules, so.
We had already obtained the one signature, so it was fine. And we are just.
Okay, you okay with it?
Yeah. So you said, make a motion to bypass the non.
I think you're suspending the step of going to the VZA, since you don't have one established yet, and recognizing that they got the signatures button.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve this variance requested, we are bypassing the VZA since we do not have one established. They do have signatures from all their surrounding neighbors, so I will make a motion to approve this variance.
You there, second?
I'm second.
On favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. You can move on to your permits.
Thank you. I'll get copies and everything, and then get your permit, you're welcome. Thank you.
We're gonna go, gentlemen, sir, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, as all of you sitting out there can see, we're short one person on the.
We got some more people wanna talk.
You wanna go through them first, or go through this first?
No, we better stay on the track. I'm a public request.
Okay.
Didn't you have requests to talk up there?
Yep, two of them right here.
Okay. Okay. Michael and Amy Vandy, I guess.
My name is Amy, this is my son Mike, we have property here in town that we're wanting to build on, we've already done the letter and all that, what, a year and a half ago? Our holdup right now is building permits, D and J Homes has been trying to get in contact to get the building permits going, last we knew, there was nobody to approve building permits, you're wondering what the process is like on that, how long it's gonna be, because our lease is up where we're at now in January, and it takes six to eight weeks to get our house done, because it is a modular home, so we're cutting it really short to our lease, and so we're trying to figure out building permits.
Can I get Charlie over?
No, there hasn't been given to Charlie yet.
I need to look through what was sent over, but if not, I can send it in the morning.
In the last ten, twelve days here, we got somebody to work on building permits for us, so we'll get the information from your application, and we'll get it over to him as soon as tomorrow.
Okay.
Get word out.
I'll let D and J Homes know.
Okay, and the application was attached to the email, correct?
I believe so.
I mean, D and J.
We sent it over.
Yeah.
Okay.
With the house plans and all that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Donnie, you're up.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here and to just bring up a couple things to the regional wastewater treatment facility that we're looking at and getting all those permits done, and we're working on that as a county to move forward with that, and including Thorn Town with us, and wanting to work together as a partnership of what will work best for Thorn Town and for us on one sixty-five, and it was a positive way, and especially for Thorn Town in the future, because you know that at some point in time, there's gonna be more growth in Thorn Town, and we wanna make sure that you have everything you need to do that, and that work together as a team on this situation. The other part is the area plan commission, and I know that you've been talking about that, as a commissioner, I sit on that board, and I highly encourage you to become part of that, just like Advance has done, that's another way for us to work as a team together, but we follow all your rules at Thorn Town. County rules do not override what you have set for Thorn Town, so, just like in Advance, all of those, all the information or all the building and anything they're doing in Advance, we follow their rules and what they've got set up, we do not ever override those, never, that will never happen. So I just highly encourage you to look at those really close, and let's work together on that, because it will really help all of us, and being a lifelong citizen of Boone County and Thorn Town, I'm proud to be part of Thorn Town, and I wanna do what I can do to help all of you to continue to grow, and working together is the most important thing, and you have one hundred percent of my support of the things that you're working forward with. You ever have any questions or issues or anything, don't ever hesitate to call me, and we'll sit down and talk about it, see how, if there is a problem, how can we move forward and solve everything, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie, and just to let you know, we'd certainly like to be part of a small commission, or whatever you wanna call it, to get together and talk about seeing for some way we can work out something for the town and out of forty-seven and sixty-five.
Yep, let's try to come up with the, maybe it's after the meeting, we talk about a day that we can sit down and talk about more details of that, I'd be happy to do that, I'll stick around till. How about?
Well, I know you don't know Jeff, but I know that we've got Jeff working on our side, too, to get something done like this, so I think that'll work out for all of us.
Well, that's what's helping me so much, is the knowledge that Jeff has, and, you know, being your town manager now, him and I working together on this, and making sure that it all goes in the best direction it can, for all of us, you know, it's not just for the county, it's for the town.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else have anything? Nobody? Okay, as I said a little bit ago, we're short one person on the board, and the reason for that is that Sarah Fairfield has found that she couldn't maintain Thorn Town as a place to live, and I'll read you her resignation, says, can you please share this with the group, council members, it's a great sadness that I must resign my position with the town council as of today, October sixth, twenty twenty-five. Due to residency requirements, I'll be unable to fulfill my term going forward. Thank you to all council members, Sarah Fairfield. And we've had, in interim time, we've had the good fortune to have a person that's interested in being part of our group, and he happens to be sitting right up front here, about as close he can get until he gets up here, but we'd like to put John, John Reagan, we'd like to put him on the board in place of Sarah, and we need to make a motion that we accept John on the board of Thorn Town Council.
I'll make a motion to accept John Reagan to replace Sarah's seat on the Thorn Town town council.
You there, second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
John, you, he'll have to be stepped into.
Sworn in.
Yeah.
Would you do that? Or, I mean, you'll be the one to do it, okay. She'll get you sworn in at some point in time, and then November seventeenth will be the first meeting, and then you don't have that ready to use an idea?
I do not, the thing.
Well, we could do it at the beginning of the next meeting.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Congratulations, John.
Thanks, girl.
Okay, we don't have anybody from the APC. Park Board.
I'm just here for the reading of the resolution.
I'm sorry?
I'm just here for the reading of the resolution, I have nothing.
Fire Department.
We do have a funding request from the fire department, it was discussed during our five to ten year plan, that we were looking at new extrication equipment for the department. The current equipment we have is over twenty years old, in order to stay for the times and the technology and cars are getting developed, we'd like to get some new battery powered tools, this is a proposal for a fifty fifty split with the township, the money thing here we shared on the five to ten year plan was for the full amount, for about forty to sixty thousand, but the total cost combined for the full set is forty-eight thousand, so we're only asking twenty-four to twenty-five thousand from you guys as a town. This would, us come from our lit fund for fire and minor use, and we have in this request at this time, I can supply more documentation on Thursday, if you, or sorry, Thursday maybe, that was discussed, I just wanted to get out there for you to get the proof.
When are you guys wanting to bank the purchase?
Before the end of the year, as soon as possible, it'd be great to get them in. If anybody's noticed, there are cars behind that department, we'd like for you to learn on these new tools and how to use them.
Is that something the price is gonna go up on if we don't get it done pretty quick?
Yes, it's, the salesman's telling us that, I think that's a good salesman, I try to keep my stuff, but you believe with tariffs and everything else that are going on, the price of leaves will be going up, so now be our, in our best interest to purchase these tools, and again, take a big split if they don't. Other than that.
Thank you. Police Department, nothing. Stormwater, nothing. Utility Department, Earl, you got anything?
Yeah, young sons who are doing our asphalt street work had to delay their ability to come to town and do it until the first week of December, they're stuck in a job down in Mikestown that is back enough part of it, they have assured me that we'll do it this year, it will be the first week of December instead, and just to update, we did in fact take dirt to the fire department and graded it out, I think fairly well, so we're taking care of, I think, what we were in bad areas that were caused by the truck spitting out to the water.
I have a question, the trench that goes north and south along seventy-five, that was not filled in?
That's a completely different thing that we didn't talk about, we talked about the tire marks, as far as I'm concerned, so that trench, are you talking about the ones left over from the water me, yeah, that's a completely different ballgame, so we took four loads of dirt down to do what we did, and I would say probably, with the truck we used and the depth of that thing, the length of it, you might be looking at, by the time you settle, maybe upwards of ten loads? Oh, yeah.
To fill that eighteen inch trench?
Oh, that's not, go down through, it's pretty deep, and it's very long, and I'm just estimating, what I'm doing is I'm looking at how many, how far four loads went in that whole area we did it.
Right.
And it wasn't much, so we can, it's a single truck, you can like put eight tons at a time, and eight tons of dirt, not much.
Right, I understand that.
Now, remember, all I do is say estimate, that's all I say.
Well, I mean, I feel like we need to fill that in, because you can't mow it, and what if some kid goes running across there and sticks a leg in it, who's responsible for that? I think it's probably gonna be us. So, I mean, we need to fill it in, so if we need to get Chuck Carson or somebody to haul in a triax load at a time and fill it in, I think we need to do it.
Well, a triax might be a load and a half, it's a huge difference in triaxles load will lead to carrying ours.
Right.
I mean, big difference, so it might not be much for something like that.
Right, okay, I see what you're saying now, you're talking about ten loads in your small, I got.
Yeah, I mean, that's a small dump.
But I still think we need to fill it in, because that was the one I was really concerned about, it's like, because you're right, like, I wouldn't even want to stuck my lawnmower in it.
They're going to charge us the same amount per ton regardless of whether we bring in a triax load or two, or do ours individually down the line, so it's gonna cost us the same, so if you would like to, you know, tell us, well, how you want to do this, we can deal with our dump. I'm just guessing, I'll take a minute.
Okay.
I'll take quite a few loads, it's not cost the same, because we're gonna charge by the ton.
Right.
For your hit, you might as well utilize our equipment, rather than, you know, our trajectory in there, so you do that scam to the track. Well, that, we're gonna have to pay some, you know, pay someone else to haul it down there.
I'm just saying, I thought we need to get it done.
What's your timeframe, Earl, can you do it or not?
Well, I believe we can do it, I can't do it tomorrow.
No, but I mean, have you got time to do it?
Yeah, we can figure it out.
Okay.
I'm just thinking, so, number one, to make sure somebody doesn't set on it, and number two, it can freeze and thaw this winter, and then we can go back grade it and stuff next spring, hopefully make it nice out there.
Well, let's start on, if it won't be something we can do, we can start making progress on it.
That's, that's perfect.
Thank you, Earl, you got, you got anything else?
That's it.
Okay, our town municipal consultant.
Well, we talked about several things already with the building inspector, he's on board and working now, he's not interested in a full-time job, so, you know, progress we can make there will be helpful, but he will, he'll work with us for the next few weeks until we get it worked out, if we choose not to join the APC, then we gotta come up with a solution for that, that's permanent, so, I'm just kinda waiting on, you guys indicate to me when you want me to put something in front of you for the APC, and then we'll go from there.
Question, Donnie said that if we were joined the county APC, they still use our rules and regulations, so would we keep our APC that we currently have just to stay on top of?
Yeah, that's not typical, but what, what I talked to them about was, is if we had ours stay on as an advisory board, and so basically what the advisory board would do would be to hear the request first, and then give an opinion to them to write into her director's report.
Yeah, well, my thought was, he said that they will continue to use our rules and regulations, but who, who at that point is gonna make our rules and regulations, you know what I'm saying, I mean?
Well, you still, you still pass all zoning ordinances, so the town board will always have, have your own voice on the zoning, and you will adopt your own zoning ordinance if you wanna change it, that then is adopted into the APC, so they will use your zoning ordinance no matter what happens going forward, the only difference is, is when it comes to a final vote for the APC, there's board members from other parts of the county, but as I've said before, my experience with Advance for many, many years is I've never seen the APC go against the wishes of them, or even attempt to.
Right, well, that's what kinda I was getting at, is we have some rules and regulations or zoning in place now, I mean, we probably need someone to continue to work on that as things change, because if not, we just got a set of rules, and now we have a set of rules, and.
Yeah, they will adapt over time, and, and they can do that work for you, the APC director can, or we can do it internally with a contractor, that's really kinda how we choose to do it, but the better way to do it would be to let the APC director take that direction from you, and then rewrite those ordinance that you see fit, but they will do it under your direction. Can I make a comment on that at the end of mine?
Maybe I said that in the beginning, but you will have a position on that board from Thorn Town, so if it's one of you as board members, or if there's someone else in the town that you want to, that what you would do is make that recommendation to us as commissioners, and then we will appoint that person to, so you will have a vote on there, just like Advance. So you will have a vote on there, just like Advance does, someone that will serve on that board. So it's not, I, I wanna make sure you understood that because it's not that we're taking, we're gonna do everything, you have a person on the board permanently. As long as you wanna be on the APC.
Continue.
Basically, we're just waiting on, you know, direction to say, let's, let's take a vote on this. So we could do that whenever you're ready to do it. I, I would suggest you put it on the agenda if you're gonna do it, so I don't know that I can do it tonight.
Right.
But if, if you want it on next, the next meeting's agenda, I would say that's probably a good move.
Yeah, build on for seventeen.
And then we can, if you'd like Deb to come out here and talk to you guys, she's more happy to do that too, that's the director of the APC now. So I mean, we could, we could do.
It, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have her come in, say at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, I'll see if she can do that on the subject.
And then, then we could take a vote after that.
Where we stand on whoever we're going to have clear that woods down there, so.
I, I've had information out now for about two weeks to a couple of guys and I've not gotten any quotes back yet. I just talked to Ed before I came in, he's putting his together, he's, he's wanting to meet me there, year one's here Thursday, take a look at it. So hopefully by the end of this week, first of next week, we'll have a quote.
Okay. Is that figured, is that, is that figured in, the cost of the plant?
It's a reimbursable expense from the bond, yeah. So we may have to front the money, but you'll get.
We'll get it back?
Yeah.
Okay, we need to get the approval of October twenty, twenty fifth minutes.
Which this is a copy to sign, if everybody's got it.
Which is what?
That's the copy to sign off on if everybody approves.
Oh, okay.
What updates do we have for minutes?
Just the last, last meeting.
Just right now, yeah.
Yeah. October seventeenth, October.
October twentieth meeting.
Yeah, October twentieth.
October twentieth. I will make a motion to approve the October twentieth meeting minutes.
I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Good job. Okay, we got these other two ordinances, twenty twenty five dash six.
Yep, twenty, uh, the second reading of, which you already did that one, except twenty twenty five dash six is the salary ordinance changes.
Okay, we don't have to read the changes?
Correct, yeah.
Well, you don't have to read it, you don't have to read it, just, just read it by title.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash six, ordinance establishing the compensation to be paid to officials and employees of the town of Thorn Town, Indiana for the calendar year twenty twenty five. That's all we need.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty five dash six.
I hear a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This one is right here.
Yes, please. Wait, here's. I got that one.
Okay, then we got resolution twenty twenty five dash eleven. As, it's first rate, we have to read it once.
Uh, this, we don't have to read it once.
It hasn't been read, has it?
No.
Didn't read it. Read it down, I will.
I'll read it. Resolution number twenty five, or twenty twenty five dash eleven, a resolution declaring the item surplus and authorizing the disposition of surplus items, whereas the town council of the town of Thorn Town, Boone County, Indiana, met a duly called authorized meeting of the town council and has determined that the following items owned by the town of Thorn Town are no longer needed and should be declared surplus and shall be disposed of according to law. Now therefore be resolved by the town council of the town of Thorn Town that the following items are hereby declared to be worthless surplus property as the value of the property is less than the estimated cost of the sale and transportation of property and shall be disposed of according to IC five dash two two dash two two dash eight. Two large wooden trash cans, one tire swing, and two broken benches. All of which is resolved and passed this third day of November twenty twenty five. I will make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash eleven.
I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That's all we have.
Yeah, I just had the alarm stock and payroll document signed before we came in.
Okay. Okay, that's all we have, folks. Next meeting is the seventeenth of November, seven o'clock. Appreciate everybody coming, thank you.
Thank you.
Nah, one thing we didn't do.
Oh no, it's fourteen dollars a ton, a hundred and twenty bucks for a load.
Was there one for a truck that came out actually quickly?
That's one, that's what that is.
Oh. Oh, I didn't, I didn't, sorry. I just read the, the reason. I didn't read that. That's all.
How much did they do?
Fourteen dollars. Should have been. Yeah, probably, like I said, eight tons is. That's a hill about this big, maybe, maybe this wide, it's not much. It's not gonna go very far each load, which way you're in, yes. It doesn't mean that you can work some hours. It's dirt, I can hold it in. They've got such sort of huge blocks state, cause they're not wearing those guys in the office and all they do is run the dirt all day long. So whatever days it's been, they just go to unlimited dirt. They wouldn't miss, it's going out there a few different times. I mean, they're gonna give it to them for free, but they weren't testing it to them.
What's a, what's a triaxal haul?
Oh, it's gonna haul about three times, about twenty five times.
Sit down here for a second, so she comes back, then I gotta get up. No, I'm really excited about, about how we, the county, and the other, the APC, and all the inspections and that kind of stuff. Cheaper than anywhere else. It's just, just our going rates is what it is. It all, it all goes on your shoulders to do that, so. So yeah, so that's, you know, I was really glad that you guys were thinking about it. So, you got any questions for me?
I'm good.
Like I said, I serve on that board already. And we remove one person, cause we'll keep it as seven people on that board.
What is there that comes up? All the construction.
That is, and all the votes have taken at that, let's say if somebody's, wanna build a house here, wherever, and they're following all your rules and that comes to us, as long as they're, they follow all the rules, we pass it. If it needs inspected, we build it, we take care of that. But also you have to vote, like everything else that's on in the county. So it's not just in Thorn Town, but the person that you, that we appoint to that from Thorn Town to cover the county under our rules or under Advance's rules. So a person on that board covers the county. And then all the other six members on that board, you catch the storm cloud, Advance, and then also address the county. But it's real important that we follow your rules, whatever is set up for Thorn Town, we don't change those. You're the only ones that changed those. So whatever is written, I'm sorry, I'm sitting here.
No, you just kinda go already.
Whatever is written and passed by you guys, that comes to us and those are what we read when it comes in and as long, and also the staff at APC goes through all of that before it comes to the board to make sure that all rules are followed and everything's taken care of. Then it's presented to the board and whoever it might be, you know, John Smith is wanting to do something here in the town and they bring it to, to our board and then, as long as all the rules are taken care of and our staff is, and the director of APC is okay with it, then it comes to our board and then they move forward with it according to your rules.
Well, that's why everyone's been afraid of in the past, I've heard so many comments about, well, I don't wanna have to go ask the county if I can build a doghouse. That's the way people think, but I didn't even realize it was still our rules.
Yes, yeah. And it, we probably weren't very clear on that, that was letting you know ahead of time on it, but Advance has been on that board, I think for fifteen years. And, you know, I'm trying to think of the last thing that we just heard from them and I think it was about building some mini houses there or something. And we said, well, what are your qualifications or what, how big do they have to be? And, and they told us, the gentleman from Advance said, these are where we're at, the APC director said, yes, those are, that's what's being submitted. And we're like, and we turned to him and said, it follows your rules, doesn't it? He goes, yeah, it's all our, our rules. And we're like, okay, then there's a motion to move forward with it. You know, we may ask some questions, but like I said, we wanna make sure that whatever's written under Thorn Town's rules, that each one of those is followed. Because it's going on in your town.
Yeah.
And, and we're not gonna override that. I think it's a, it's a great thing to do, cause it's worked, for the last fifteen years, it's worked very well with Advance. And I think it's, it's a great time and opportunity for, for you to step in on that too, so that we can help you because of the, everything that's going on on the west side of town and what's gonna happen in the next five years or ten years or whatever is gonna, you know, the town's gonna grow.
Right.
But it, and it's one step at a time, you know, with that, you're not in any hurry. No one's in any hurry for it to grow, you wanna make sure it grows in the right direction, whatever that might be. Same way with the waste, regional wastewater.
I know I was, I've been on the board a while, when we went through this whole process with Barbara out here now, we had not a clue.
Yeah.
What we were doing.
Yeah, well, I do that every day, I don't have a clue what I'm doing, or at least I say that. So I'll admit to it too.
So I mean, there, there's some, you know, some things out there that we may have missed or have to end up dealing with after the fact, but, but, you know, we, we've never been in that position before, so we didn't really know. Or, or anybody on our board, APC, no one had experience of doing that before, so.
Well, and I think, I think the other thing is, is with this regional wastewater and, and how we're gonna help each other out with that, you know, where's it need to be? We, we'll work on details on that, but we need to get our permit first. And I hope that this, maybe it's in the next twelve days, next thirty days, that'll be filed with IDIM and to go through that process and maybe it'll take us ninety days to get that back, then we will be setting up a board for that. And my whole idea on that is that, when you look at, and, and this is my opinion, Jeff and I have talked about this a lot, is that it's Sugar Creek Township and Washington Township and Thorn Town that's involved in this. So we wanna keep that a small board and I would say probably five members to that board. So we want, we want two from Washington Township, since that's a huge area of it. One from the town and two from the township. So it'll be those two townships and the town that will be on that board that will manage that, that project. And so that's another thing for us to look, look towards in the future. And that, that will, and how that gets set up and how we appoint that, they're all gonna be appointed by the commissioners, but I wanna make sure that we've thought through that and, and who do you want on that board, you know, as far as representing the town? And then, okay, then, then we, we go that direction with, with two from Thorn Town, one from, from Sugar Creek and two from, but I wanna make sure that we've got, got the, got the numbers in there and, and the other thing that I have, I have told the other two commissioners, I said, you know, I can, I can say this because I grew up here and I know the area very well, it would make sense for me to be on the board, but I think that's a conflict of interest, because I'm a county commissioner and I own property in both townships. And I don't have a problem with someone else doing that, but as an elected official, I think it's the wrong thing to do and I will not do that. And if I get my way, there will be no commissioners on that board. I think it's the two townships and the town that should be represented in that, no one outside of there.
Agreed. I agree with that.
And I will, I will fight that, cause I, I think that is the right thing to do.
What about the north side of forty seven, going along there? Look at the guy on that property that has the fenced in stuff with the.
No. No. The, the, the northwest corner of that is owned by Clark Farms. They bought that a couple of years ago, I think. And I think it's, you know, cause they were down there on sixty five, had the whole home buildings there, then they built a whole new operation there south of, southwest of.
What are you talking about, the northwest corner? You mean right, right as you cross fifty two?
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm talking to sixty five, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That ninety acres is owned by, by Clark.
I'm just thinking about how we would get out there if we, if we come to some agreement, we're gonna have to build a new plan and then, then you guys are gonna probably want water along the shore.
Well, I think, I think it's a perfect opportunity if we're laying that, that wastewater that we're way, I mean, to me, there's no, no reason not to is put a water line in there too. Right, let's do it all at once.
Is, is Lebanon gonna fight down? On the water, water part?
Sorry, I'm laughing about this, but I, I get really irritated with the way things are done there, I'll, I'll push that aside. Lebanon has their water line there at three fifty in, in forty seven. They ran straight south to fifty two. Mayor's had talked to them and it seems like somebody else has talked to him about, you know, pulling water off of that. And the only way that'll happen, according to the mayor, is if that's annexed. And as a county, no, that is not gonna happen.
So, but what, what I'm referring to is, uh, don't, don't they have the water rights out there? Isn't that section? Isn't that section of land, they passed that not too long ago. I don't know that it ever went to the regulatory commission yet.
As far as just the water or the?
They, they, they passed an order that's expanded their, their water territory.
It does not involve that, that area. They're, they've got five wells at the old fun park, but that's it. They were wanting to expand that way, but with Jeff and I and, and working with the company that's laying this all out, what we've done is expanded all the way to the railroad tracks, um, all the way down to four fifty. I think that's right, or even, even further to the golf course, basically on north side of the golf course, because that's in Washington Township. Clear over to, it comes up Serenplant Road. I mean, I wish I had one of those maps with me. And then goes north to, um, what road is it? The next, see, I, I should know what all the road numbers are. I can drive everywhere, but I can't tell you road numbers. Is it seven hundred or seven fifty? The next crossing or the next bridge across the interstate there to the north. Whichever one that is, but by.
Oh, that's, that's the one, that's, uh, Blue Ball Avenue.
Well, no, 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 not that far.
Six fifty goes out, uh, out of town here, goes out and makes the job.
Yeah, that, that road there. So we, we've gone all the way, yeah, it made, it probably turns into seven hundred when it crosses the interstate. But we've taken that, 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 the regional district all the way up to it, all the way to Thorntown. And, uh, and then, like I said, to the railroad tracks. So that, so now we are in control of that and how that, we, I'm talking about all of us are in control of that so that Leavenon cannot come in on it. And I, I think when we're talking about the water, I think that's a really good thing to do.
It only makes sense to take one train.
That's right. Do it, do it once because I think that your, Thorntown's development is gonna start going to the east. And why not have the wastewater and the water all there? So when it does, and how that will invite people to, I think, to come that direction because like, wait, wait a minute, we got everything we need right here. I'm not in development, but I am involved with this and stuff. And I just, trying to think ahead, what, what's coming down the road, you know, in the next five to ten years? And, and, uh, we get that all put in and I'm hoping that we can stay in the, in the highways right away. Because that would be the best thing to do.
I didn't know whether we'd have any trouble from Trevor, whatever his name is out there.
Well, that's why I wanna stay in the right way, yes.
Going through the right way.
Yeah.
Sure, forty seven has so many feet.
Yes, well, I think about where the power lines are, you've got that room in between there. And what else is buried in there, you know, fiber lines, whatever. There's no gas lines in there on that side of the road. I don't think there's any gas lines anywhere. There's no natural gas anywhere along there.
North side, I don't think, I don't even think home buried.
There is gas. To your brother.
Yes, there is. And yep, that, that's a good point because their houses run off of that and.
Well, they're about the only ones that are hip after that.
Yeah, and so where it comes from, I, I don't know which side of the road it is. But, I mean, that's something that we would find out.
Yeah.
The other, other thing that Jeff and I have talked about is, is how do we get to the plant? It's gonna be built out at, at your wastewater area already. And the other thing that I, I didn't realize, I think everything's flat around here, but everything from the interstate to here is downhill, which makes pumping that, that wastewater easier. So then we'd have to have less pumps. I think probably they're talking about maybe two is all that we'd have to have. So I'm thinking, how do we get to there? You know, if we come up forty seven and, and come into town, then how, that's gonna destroy roads and everything to do that. And so Jeff and I are talking about, so let's say, for instance, if we stop about where Davis's house is and, and then head to the north, you know, get someone to agree to that and we, you know, buy an easement from them, cut across Smith's and then bore under the creek there. What we've got to do is come to, to, uh, North Pearl Street and you have a pump there already. So we get to that and then, then we cut expenses out of having to bore under railroad tracks and do all that. Now what we need to look at is, can that pump handle it or do we need to increase it? But it'd be better to, to do something that's already there. And so Jeff and I are gonna go out there one of these days when we have time and look at how it needs to come through there and, and make suggestions of how we think it'd be and then talk to landlords too.
You actually could go farther than that, to the west and, and cut across that field on the east side of Prairie Creek. It's alr, it's already got a, well, they got a, uh, well, or something there that used to pump natural gas. Because Thorntown used to have natural gas.
Okay.
And you could go across that field there towards Smith's and then cut across.
Yeah.
Or any place.
And, and we're, we're just trying to figure out what's, what's the best way then to not go in front of those houses that are right there by Davis's? Is that, I think if we stay on the north, well, Jeff's talked about, no, sorry, I said north side, that's my idea. Jeff and I also talked about on the south side because at Garden Acres there, if we're running right in front of there, then they get tightened into the system because those septic systems have to be fifty, sixty years older, older. I mean, it, you know.
But it's, it's really not that big a deal to tap on and go by there and make a push under.
Yeah.
And, and stub it off on the south side.
You're right.
And stay on the north side and that way you won't tear up the driveways and all that stuff going across there.
Good idea. And, and there's less houses for us to, to go past if we're on the north side of forty seven. There would only be.
Well, you got.
One house, if, if before you got, got there at Davis's and then we're able to go out into the field.
Stay there, you're gonna go by about three houses or four right there. But if that guy would sell, it's got the big house right outside of town there, or selling the easement across there, seems to me like it'd be easier to go right down there and cut across to the north on, uh, on the east side of Prairie Creek. And go across there to wherever you think it might be a better crossing.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we're looking at to get ideas of what, what would be the best direction to go there to get to your pump station that, that already exists. It's not gonna be cheap to do, so whatever we can do to cut those costs and to put in, I have no clue what a pump station would cost. But if that's one last, and the other thing is boring under the railroad tracks. Because basically you'd have to bore from basically the old, um, firehouse there all the way under to get to the other side, to get under the roads, I mean, the way I look at it, so you're not digging up the roads now. I don't do that. I, I come up with ideas where I think it might be better.
They, uh, they charge about a foot normally, but I, I mean, I, I worked for Bell for thirty years, so I did a lot of pushes. I've been, I've been with the contractors as a supervisor over the contractor. So I know what it takes to do pushes. And, and it's not a, it's not something that the companies that are designed to do this, they got all the equipment to move in there.
Oh, yeah. In no time.
Two days.
It's amazing what they can do.
Yeah, yeah. Was it, the best, one of the better things they would probably recommend doing, and I would too, is they push a pipe under. But, you know, it might be so big a pipe. And then they, then they run, run the sewer pipe through that pipe. And then you got a place to go through any time you want to dig down the pipe. If you wanna run something else either, it's already done.
Yeah. Lots of things to think about, but, but I'm really excited that you guys are gonna consider the APC because I, I, um, I'm kinda pushy about it, but I, I just think it's, it's great for all of us for you to join.
What's, what's, I know there's a lot of ups and downs to the APC, so what's the downside for us?
I can't come up with any because, uh, and, and, you know, like I said, it, it's all by your, your rules and regulations that you set. And I think in the past, people, and I know Jeff and I have talked about that, that, that whether you guys understood that or, or, you know, what will the people of Thorntown think when, when this gets posted for your agenda on the next one? Is that it doesn't change anything. It just, it saves you a huge amount of money. Because any contractors you hope, you wanna, want to come in to do all the inspection and stuff is extremely high.
Well, inspections and then, I know we've paid out a lot of. To the different counties on the work that they've helped us with as far as the APC goes, updating our. All the board members and zoning and all that stuff.
Right, and so this, this is just whoever you're doing the inspection on, they're the ones that are gonna pay this. And it's a reasonable price, I couldn't even tell you what it is. We changed those prices because we needed to come up a little bit. And so we've done that. There are some people that think, well, we don't, why do we wanna do anything with Thorntown? That's when I say, why do you wanna live in Boone County? Because it's about the whole community, it's the whole county that we, we look at how to do things. And this is a perfect opportunity for us to work together and, and help Thorntown. Because so much has gone to the south, and I'm not against any of that down there. But, you know, Thorntown, Advance and Jamestown have been ignored for years and years. And, and we've gotta push that out.
Been great.
Well, it has on a lot of things, yes, that is true. But as far as, answer your question, I cannot think of any negative impact of this at all. And you could be on that board, let's say for five or, or ten years, and then you decide, wait a minute, now we'd like to go off the board and go back to our own and, and doing all that. And that can happen at any point in time.
When, when you, how often do you meet and when do you meet?
Once a month and it is the first Wednesday at seven, seven or seven thirty, seven PM in the County Lamar Room there in the annex is where we always meet. Sometimes a meeting might last ten, fifteen minutes, it can be real simple, or it might last an hour or more. So what's going on? And like I said, whoever is appointed to that from here will be covering everything in the county. So if it's something going on in Jamestown or not in Jamestown, they, they take care of themselves there. But in, on any of the county's area or in Thorntown or Advance is all controlled by that board.
Life's down Zinesville aren't part of it?
Yeah, they're not. Yep, they have their own. Same with Jamestown. We would like for them to join in, but they decided two years ago that they'd rather do it themselves. We're like, that's fine. But if at some point in time, time they wanna join, then we wanna do the same thing and, and, uh, remove a board member and bring one of their, their appointees in. And I wanna, we could expand that board to nine. It has to be an uneven number, we're seven now. And somebody said, well, let's just take it to nine. And I'm like, the bigger you make the boards, the harder you make it. It works just fine at seven, so let's remove one and add one. Pardon?
Hard enough at five.
Yeah, what I was gonna say.
Not alone going to seven or nine.
So I, I, I don't, anytime I can keep from making a board bigger, that's what I wanna do. If, if things are working just fine, then keep it the same number.
We can see what happens with fifty. We don't have a governor.
Yeah. Well, I'll quit telling stories to you guys, but no, I, I, uh.
Appreciate you.
And, and I, and I will be here on the, on the seventeenth. So any questions you have or anything, I'll be here to, to help you and, and support what, what you're going towards. I haven't been at the meetings in the past because I'm also on the, I'm a trustee for the Elks. And so this is the same time we have meetings, we had one tonight. And I told them last week, I said, I will not be at our board meeting because I'm gonna be here. And I'll tell them again, I will not be at our next meeting because I will be here. And that's one of those things that if that's every month, I need to come to one of them or, you know, we'll, we'll just see how things go. I don't want you to think that I'm pushing my, myself in here to, to do anything. But it's when there's questions and concerns and things, then I will be here to help you anyway I can.
We appreciate you coming in. And I found out years ago when my dad joined the Elks, RFPOE means best people on earth.
You're absolutely right.
He didn't tell me the real words.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a lot of, a lot of fun. I, I really enjoy it.
What, what do you win the other night?
I won a, uh, Edmonton seven hundred.
Uh, where was that? Six and a half Elks, was it? Six and a half?
Six point five, yeah, yeah. I just picked it up to that.
You know, he's a member, you know, who, who had to get the tickets for him? Me. And I wanted a percentage of that, but he didn't offer.
I'll give you the boxer king then.
Okay.
Didn't even say that you shoot it.
Yeah, well, there you go.
What's the county's rule on when you get a building permit from start to finish? Isn't it two years on like a new home?
Oh, how long it's good for?
Yeah, well, from when you start to when it has to be done.
I think, I think there is a two-year rule on it, but I, you can get that extended by just going in front of the APC. Tell them why, tell them why you had to delay.
I was just, I've been looking through our book just because something came out and I can't find if we have anything like that.
That's something that Ally and I were just talking about. I think we're gonna try to get the design ones.
Ally, I haven't closed the meeting yet because it's illegal. It's illegal for all of us to be here talking if we, if I close the meeting.
All right, we done? Ben, we done?
If they're done.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that I explained everything to you guys and we're on the same page. You know, have to get ahold of me twenty-four seven.
I'm making a motion, we'll close the meeting at eight oh five second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Now you can kick us out.